Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call the order of the regular town council meeting. If you could please stand for the pledge allegiance. The flag is usually there.
Continue hard tonight.
We'll place outside. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It remains standing tight as you lead us in the campaign.
Absolutely, this is our heated prayer. Our gracious and kind heavenly Father, we gather again today. We gather under your blessing and guidance, Lord. We ask that you will be with us again tonight as we face the challenges and the turbulence and tribulations that you have given us and understand, and we are blessed that you have not maximized those potentials, Lord. We ask that you will be with each individual here tonight, that you'll give them safe travels back home or to their destination. We ask that you'll be with this governing body as they make some of these decisions tonight, Lord. Give them the wisdom and the courage to make the decisions that are in the best interest of your son's name, Jesus Christ. We ask you this in all your name.
First, we're going to start out with the special presentations and requests. We have with us a Cynthia Beavers from Vocational Schools, Tassau County Career Technical Center, right? You got that right. We always call it "folks," so. Would you mind coming up and telling us a little bit about the winners? I can read the names, but about the competition in general?
Yes. In February of this year, we hosted a district skills essay competitions. We had over 200 students in every vocational center, and it was pretty awesome to see each person. To see the skills in the different clusters was amazing. We had a little over 60 students who participated. We had roughly, I think it was 38 that placed in the district. All those 38 that went to the Voca- that placed at district. 26 plus two models were eligible to go to state. We ended up taking 24 kids with us to state, and 21 out of... 24, 23 actual contestants won the model, and 21 out of 23 placed in the top 10 in the state, Virginia. So that was 30, and that was over all of our school reports. So we had every cluster except the three represented at state, and they all took it in the top 21, top 10, excuse me, the 21 students. So we are extremely proud of them. We have two that are going on later this month to compete in nationals. We have one young lady who is a postgraduate and is competing in auto body collision repair. She is amazing to watch. And we also have another young lady who is competing in barbering. So we're hoping to bring home a couple more national titles. We have been well represented in the last five or six years. We've gone to nationals every year. Last year, we had the young man place fifth in small engine motorcycle repair. So we're, we're making great progress. We're very proud of you doing this.
Do you see any of the students here?
No, unfortunately.
And for those who don't know, Cynthia Beavers is the principal. If it's okay, my school, please, don't mind on that. Well, we're very proud. I've got a picture of all the kids and their awards, and we're very proud and glad that we can recognize these kids and...
I did want to say that I'm sorry that the students couldn't be here. We had tried to be here, as you know, in April and May, and then we had state warrants in May, and the girls didn't get back, but all six of the six passed their state warrants, so that was a good thing. So we hate that the kids weren't able to be here, but with family and jobs and vacations after school's out, it's kind of hard.
Very good.
We do appreciate the recognition.
Absolutely. Thank you. Congratulations.
Mayor Potts, Councilwoman. I'm honored to be here today to thank you all for everything that you've done to help us. Apologize for Daddy Fox, for leaving him off, but you all need to get his picture up on that webpage. One thing to say... This year, the Virginia State Department decided that attendance should be part of our school accreditation, and as part of that, I have connections to some friends through where I'm getting my doctorate at, in Washington County, and they did a Strife for Five program. So I stole the program and created Ten Mess...
Borrowed.
I borrowed. Changed it up a little bit, put Ten Mess Drive for Five. That's a program that encourages kids to be at school five days out of the week now. Before, we did a lot of pressure with on check-ins and check-outs and all of that. You know, don't check in, don't check out, you know, be here all the time, and you're in trouble if you get five tardies, you're going to be counted back. You'll end up in ISS. So we changed it up, and one of the things about this, and I'm just going to read the first paragraph of the information that we sent home with the kids, it says, "Did you know a student is at risk of falling behind if he or she misses a few as two days at school a month? Two days per month, times nine equals chronic absenteeism." Chronic absenteeism, that's our... "Is missing at least 10% of school days in school year for any reason excused or unexcused. It's a primary cause of low academic achievement. A few absences in the first month of school can predict poor attendance throughout the school year. Poor attendance in preschool, kindergarten, and first grade make it less likely that students will be able to read at grade level by the end of the third grade, and more likely that they will be held back. By sixth grade, chronic absenteeism," I'm scribbling that word wrong, "becomes a major indicator that a student will drop out of school. By ninth grade, attendance is a better predictor of graduations and test scores." You think if you have an employee that misses 18 days out of 80 days, or 180 days, you're going to fire them if they're not going to be there. Last year, Tassau Middle School had 62 students out of 410 that missed more than 18 days at school. Almost 23.66% of our students were chronically absent last year. This year, we got it down, it was 35. We have... Tassau Middle School should be fully accredited. We have the best scores now for the next half in 14 years. Very proud of that. But, um, thank you. Sorry. With this...
Can we take this?
No. Thank you for everything you've taken off of us.
This is the direct reflection of you. These kids are smiling. The town will do many things toward you and the kids.
That was life. We had 140 kids this year that qualified for five days, or less than the tenants, which is amazing.
You did a phenomenal job.
I'm really, really going to cry. I really do appreciate you all.
We enjoyed it.
And all your support this year, so. If there's anything you need to know, please.
Stay here. I'm never hesitant. Charity, I don't like me crying.
It is good, and thank you so much. And the teachers say thank you for the t-shirts, too. The town's support of our school system and our students is so important. Somebody appreciate it.
Thank you, Charity. Next on the agenda, Mr. Bunch, who has a request on closing Main Street.
Well, first of all, I apologize that coming so late with this request, we only came up with this idea for this event on May the 12th, and Mr. Day has rang in. He hasn't recorded. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Day has rang in some of what I had wanted to do, and what he has suggested I was saying. What we'd like to do, we'll have a... What we're going to put on the Juneteenth celebration, which if you don't know, June 19th, 1865, the newly reformed Texas legislature, that's the constitution, which outlawed slavery and involuntary slavery. Now, it took two more years for the words to get all the way out, and I'm not sure some of them have ever heard yet, but this is going to be a celebration of happiness. The t-shirt that we have has four freed slaves in colorful outfits dancing, celebrating freedom. So we're not going to the courthouse to tear down the statue. Now, we might actually move them over someday, put something black beside them. So that... But, uh, that's some kind of excuse. But we're not going, and then, we want, that starts at 5:30, and then as soon as we're done with about 10 or 15 minutes of ceremony, we'd like to have Main Street down to Hurst Stop, and then literally close, so that you can march down the street at about 6:10 in the mile, which is about some of how we would do. But we've got a big event planned at the, Fairgrounds, we're going to have live music, and we're going to have choir sing some spirituals and so forth. But it's going to be a happy time, and it's a chance for Tassau to show that even though we might vote one way or very strong, we're still friendly to everybody. We still welcome everybody, especially if they're angry. So I think in the future, if we make this a success this year, we're planning to be on Wiki next year because of the big year, 19, 20, 21st. We're, I'm not getting caught for a hold, and I'm already thinking about next year. I've never had a response like this. America is very supportive, Todd, and everybody in the surrounding community has signed on. I don't know how many people want to add, but I think it's a pretty good crowd. So I, I'm a little impressed that they would block the street for a while.
For how long do you think it would be closed?
Well, 30 minutes, 45 minutes, from probably 5:45 to how long takes to walk?
You're talking about from the courthouse down?
Down to Hurst Stop, and we're going to have shuttle buses for them to hang walls through the intersection, and everybody's taking a ride down Fairgrounds, and then we're going to have four people from the little where you can get them, and that was...
Have you checked with businesses along there?
Uh, Mr. Beavers, the daddy, the pastor, the best resident, instructions along, and that's required, every direction that he is, we're going to follow under your supervision. He's going to check with the businesses. We also talked about the hours. What I'd like Cancel to do is approve the event. Don't approve the route. Let Donnie Pruitt and Mr. Bunch handle the route. And we'll be on Main Street, but logistically, I've only got a couple of ways to get heavier traffic. Well, here's another one. I just thought of this. If it's a problem down the street with business, why don't we just go down the street here and go around the house? That's right. That's right. So if Cancel approves it, we'll work it out. We'll work this out. And next year, I found something a couple months ahead. Keep it posted on what's going on.
Yeah.
You can go and face the Tassau Indian neighbors, that's the route we just formed on May the 12th, and it's an event, Juneteenth celebration. We're going to have a Black History contest, an essay contest, some cash prizes. The lady in the blue field, I don't know, coming, I might know her, Suzie Green, she's a retired school teacher, and when I called her and asked her to judge the essays, she almost cried. She said, "This is just so wonderful." She said, "There's going to be more Black History students between May and June 19th, and these kids are discussing their whole school career." So I think it's going to be a positive thing. You know, we're not going up there to carry statues, you know. We may not like them. We'll leave them in that spot. Anyway, thank you very much. I'll let you know. Oh, you kind of say, I would like to say one thing about vocational school. Every kid that leaves there and graduates there can get a living wage job. Every kid. The skills that they teach out there, and when they come to us, they say, "Oh, we got that vocational school." Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the event.
Okay, so all in favor? All opposed?
Mr. Bunch, all you got to do is get in touch with, just call Town Hall and ask for Donnie Pruitt, and y'all can set a time to meet, and he can go over. There's some issues with closing the street, but he knows what to y'all, so he'll work with it. Okay. Thank you very much.
So next, Mr. Johnson, have some community concerns if you'd like to come up. If you could state your name and address, please.
I ain't really fancy talking, ladies. Just going to sit here and meet, since I'm here. I'm Kerry Johnson. I live over on Maker Wood. Everybody that comes into town for a football game, basketball game, baseball, any kind of sports thing, they're all at the school, kind of stood maker wood, if you think about it. Few comes down the other way, a lot of them comes to Maker Wood. It's a ugly strip we've got, and it depicts our town. It needs some beautification. A few Bartlett Parish, you go to, uh, McBurney. You go to any of the smaller towns around, very beautiful. They don't have dirt like they do up. Narrows, Rocky Gap, all those towns are beautiful, and you know they don't have that kind of money. We could put a few park benches out, these flower boxes like we've got in town. We had to dig a little spot out of the town, over the road from, what, 50 foot to San... Something like that. Got an upper end where you can put a few of these blooming flower trees out down through there. Have that fence line cleaned up through there, it's nothing but an eyesore. And maybe down at the old service station down there, put a sign up with Narrows, Home of the Bulldogs. You know, just pretty it up, and I'm sure everybody else in town would appreciate those streets being cleaned, prettyed up. Don't cost that much. Give these flower parrots, maybe a park bench, find a local spot. We got a sidewalk down through there, so, uh, got a line hanging down on one side of the road. That's not a sidewalk, that's part of the road. We was farming sidewalks years ago. Something like, but some worse. I don't know what happened. They said that, I better not say anybody's name, they said that there at Band Ice, they just want to put a sidewalk down that side. There's a lily or something in the branch, put a bridge across it. Ain't no big deal. The curb up there at the Returning Vocational School. How many cars has went over that branch? How come we can't get a guardrail? At least we could put them back out for us, we could put them over now. That's all we got. Thank you.
H is full B. The H is, I'm not going to talk to you. Is there any way that we could press it up and down through there on the trees or something?
Yeah, what I can do is I can get them canceled, and we can look at all 63 miles of streets in town, and you can figure out where you're going to do that. Yeah, absolutely. Sidewalk, tree, fair streets.
Isn't that road, isn't that part of our sidewalk plan? I mean, it's gone way back, but isn't it part of what we have, Grant, when you park?
I think what he's talking about, three next to me, it does.
Yeah, three next to most everybody on his bench, just so you know. But it's something we've been working towards for a while.
But no, not grandfunds, no, the H funds are on the other three routes.
I think the grandfunds on Phoenix, Tassau Avenue, that location, right?
You're right, they, and 61.
And 61. Now, that's, well, that's good. I'm talking about down through Cemetery, Maker Wood. That was passed a long time ago, remember, to a sidewalk. But what I'm saying is, right there at the vocational turn, that needs to be a guardrail or something there to protect, especially in studies and the ball games. There's a lot of crowd that's out there in ball games, and going to Tassau High School, you got students driving to the school system, and it's heavy traffic during the fall and the spring. Lot of traffic out through there. I've checked on that. And if there's any way we can beautify that straight stretch.
That's a good stretch to do, it looks good.
Yes.
That sidewalk, yeah, we beat that around and it's something, we're getting ready to start from Church Street and finish what I started five years ago on Main Street. We're going all the way to National Bank Second Interests. After that, we were looking at the car line, the problem, and we'll get through it. But during football games, people park all the way in car line, so putting a sidewalk on, I'll talk with you, we'll get there, but how you going to park if the sidewalk's there? It's such a short area. I'm not saying we can't, but we'd be looking at it. So it, I mean, it's a problem right there. Fair tree, good idea.
Put a sidewalk on the opposite side of the road, if you want.
Well, you could put it on the upper side, too, it's got the thing. Might be.
Now, whatever is on, you know, sidewalk goes through it. The whole town needs to be good sidewalks, good water lines, good paving. That's going to be a long way, but we need to start from the ground, so you rather work out. They're right.
We can do that, Dave, we'd have to raise taxes substantially.
Well, we did.
But look at it.
I've got like federal and state grants that could help, too.
Mr. Johnson, thank you for your time and bringing this up. We do appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
And I've been on the council as long as Dave, and I recall something about, we were on this, we were on this sidewalk being through there, and it was something, Iris and us told us we couldn't.
The previous manager talked about the flood between there, and it was...
And made me wrong, but that's what we...
They said the cattails is what kicked it out up there, or the branch you said.
But Danny said he was going to build a walking path like a bridge across the office. I'm sure that was...
That was right. So I'll bring that one more time. Uh, but even, it's very dangerous in school months. The parents come to pick their kids up at the school over there. They park in the road all the way up through there, right in that turn where this guardrail is that we're talking about. Is it illegal to stop in the middle of the road? You're not supposed to. How come they can't, if you had to designate a time or put a light up or something, come around behind the vocational school? That way, they're off of the highway. Come around through by the middle school, pick their children up, come back out on the road. I know the buses are back there, but back at the vocational school, you've got two routes through there. They can designate one for the mothers and fathers that picks their kids up, and one for the buses. Because if, I've came from town many a time, and all these cars are pulled up through there, you have to get over in the opposite lane in a blind turn, and hope you don't get hit with a little ramp. It's a bad situation right there.
Somebody makes you one of my school system has never addressed it.
I don't know why somebody has addressed it, because, and it's a bad situation, really.
I bet that guy in that white shirt right there does.
At 3 o'clock, you said, have you seen how we get over there to pass through here?
Sometimes I've seen it out of the road. They line up at about 1 o'clock in the day, and so they're there to pick people up. I think that we could probably go and put a sign up saying you can't line up until like 2:45, and that might take care of some of the problems. But I think the realignment that they did the other day, or yesterday, will actually help with some of the problems we have with the parking, with people coming early to pick kids up.
I think that's true, because a lot of the pickups were out of the area.
Right. But I do think, but I do think we need to have a sign saying you can't park, pick your kids up until a certain time. It worked very well in my former location that I worked at, and I've been thinking about doing it anyway, but we might have to address it this year.
Thanks again. So next, we have a special recognition of a very special man, that was a teacher, a few of us in this room.
Thank you.
Just a few. Not trying to make you feel older or anything, thank you. Might fail at that. Todd, I named one of them, so if you work, could you come down, please?
So while he's coming down, you know, I had a good friend of mine, holding camera over there, helped me, helped design this picture, but what I want to say about Terry is we've been working on this train station, and when I say "we," I mean me, my staff, and the team up front, the Council, have been working on this train station for, I think, going on 43 years now. No, I'm just kidding. There was a challenge, there was a challenge that was issued to Terry by the previous mayor, and I guess it's probably been how long ago? Four years, three years ago? 2002. You can make it up, all I remember is... Well, I think it was later than that, because I started in Twadeo, so I think it was a little later than that, but that's probably... The challenge was to take on the task of the federal government and apply for federal grants and make that train station a reality, and I can tell you that if it wasn't for the staff, Robin, and, you know, Donnie Pruitt, the public works, and I could go on and on and name names, I shouldn't have named those, but now I'm in trouble. And I don't know the rest of them, but all the town canceled, but I can tell you the first time that we applied to the state register, we made it. The first time that we applied to the national register, we made it. So the train station is just not known locally. It was in a paper, I think, in New York, it was, there were some articles in that, but the idea of teamwork and working together, but, you know, what I want to get across is, you know, all of us in a management position, you know, where you've got employees, to be challenged by your superiors or your boss is something I'm proud of. You hardly ever hear me look at the Council members, and I'll challenge them to remind me if I've ever done it and say, "No, I can't do it." You give me a task to do, and I'll never look at you and say, "It's too late." Blah, 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 blah. I'm going to go wide open and do it. And Terry issued that challenge to me specifically back when it was snowing, great. And he didn't know this, but he was always talking with me, and he said, "Well, let's shoot for Grand O'Neal in May." And I'm sitting here thinking about the asphalt plants and when they're going to open, and the workload the Council had already put out there. But anyway, I took that challenge, you know, as a manager, the last thing I want to hear from staff is, "I can't, oh, I ain't going to work, oh, I don't want to do it." Well, I wasn't, I've never done it, wasn't going to start then, so I took the challenge, and, you know, with fleeing Terry and his encouragement and picking cancel and all the staff, you know, that project was a reality, and I can tell you, compared to the other historical, national, restorative structures in a 20-mile radius, he did it in record time. And I can assure you of that, I know that for a fact. So that was good work involving, I appreciate the challenge, and hit me with it again sometime. I'll step up to it. Thank you very much.
And then, we'd like to present you with this picture, just small token by appreciation for all the hard work you put in, all the time and effort. We really do appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
I won't talk long, but it was not a one-man show, and I appreciate everyone, and many of those "everyone's" are in this room, because many people in here did their part, and it does take a village, and we got this village rolling, and that's what's amazing, because if you can keep on the positive side of things, and on the...
on the upbeat and put a goal out there and we all strive for the same goal, we can't be stopped. So thank you.
Absolutely. Good job. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes from a work session and council meeting on May 14th, 2019. Any... I'll give a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, motion moves forward. And next on the agenda is the approval of the financial statements and financial report on May 2019. Need a motion to approve. So move. Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So next we're gonna have a finance commission committee update by Councilmember Brooks.
We had a remarkably, we met for an hour and covered everything we had to cover. That was unusual. And the two items that were most extensively discussed were the demolition of a house on Harmon Street with accompanying photographs, which were pretty blood carded in. But anyway, it's gone now. And then there was some discussion of the bed and breakfast ordinance. So that's my report.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, now we're gonna get to the unfinished business portion because I don't think Terry needs to update it on the train station anymore. It's open for business. Okay, first item is the second reading and approval of the 2019-2020 budget. And we will need a vote on that. Todd, whenever some of the changes with us earlier, and I'm not 100% sure what I'm supposed to read except, you know, there were changes that we have highlighted on this.
I can go over the changes if you want to real quick. We can do it quickly if you'd like for the record. We had a redo some change in staff and also some change in program. These are the changes that took place. We have a revenue showing coming in from the Tazza County for water, sewer, electric on the train stations. We had showed that estimate. In recreation, we had $55,000 for fishing docks. We pulled it out because that fishing dock is up there now. We have $25,000 for an economic position. There's $6,000 budgeted for train station expenses when they're going out. We also have a sports complex expenses of $60,000. The parking garage, $35,000 feasibility study was pulled out. Cap improvement, the balance all was $41,557.99. Salary increase of $12,330 in the general fund and the rest of that is FICA health insurance. If you go down to the water, we had a salary increase of $9,000. The rest of that is FICA insurance. Line construction, Mr. Brooks requested to pull out $5,000, move it to salary, drop that line from 50 to 45. Water reserve is a balance all of 32, 32, 46, 56. In the sewer collection, you have a $9,000 change in salaries. By the way, those three salaries are one position. You also got FICA health department. I mean, health, life insurance, the same employee benefit line, line construction, drop $9,000 from 16, 703 under Mr. Brooks' request to 76, 76, 87. Only the balance all changes that remain since the past year. Just need a motion from town council to approve the budget as presented. And you have that in front of you, by the way.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll say it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. But next is the second reading and approval of the Overly District with the recommended changes.
Okay, there are no changes from a month ago. We had a first reading a month ago. You've got the same exact highlighted packet that you got a month ago. There are no changes. You can recommend to suspend the reading and also recommend to approve. Need a vote for both of them.
I'll make a motion to suspend the reading.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Terry would just go.
I was trying to make up the last one, Brad. So motion to suspend reading approved. So now we need a vote to actually approve the...
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to approve the new zoning of Overly? Approved. So next, Todd will give us an update on the indoor-outdoor sports complex feasibility study.
Okay, I'm gonna come up front, talk to council a little bit about this project. To me, it's one that lies very close to my heart for the, not only for the community, but for Tazza County. I always want to say thank the mayor for allowing me to come up.
Take your name right there.
Yeah, my address is 12 Church Street.
Two minutes, please. Somebody hit the timer.
Couple of years ago, I know Glenn Katcher and Chris will remember this, but we actually had a meeting, actually at the front porch, at Irma Mitchell's restaurant with some community investors and some investors from outside to talk about, talk about an idea that I had kicked around a little bit and that I know that has been brought up a multitude times historically. Matter of fact, Glenn Katcher brought it up, what, 15 years ago or more? We'll hit mid to 30, 40 years. But you know, I have a young daughter that plays sports and until I had the opportunity to travel and look at what these sports complexes, not complex, the complexes are doing for the economy of small communities, it was just astronomical. So as manager, I'd sit in there after I rode around the facility two or three times to find a parking place, I'd sit back and look at the individual that was taking the $10 bills or the $5 bills as these kids came in the door, you know, they brought moms, dads, uncles and cousins. So I had conversations with Coach King at the school amongst the multitude of other coaches. And you know, what I saw with Coach King was a passion for the kids in the community to have something. And then I learned that our kids, not only here, but in our region, travel all the way to Liberty University, all the way to Liberty University just to run an indoor track program. And that was astonishing to me that, you know, closer by a regional distance, there's nothing to offer Pulaski Grace and John, there's nothing anywhere around to offer that and travel ball and, you know, I hear that volleyball is bigger than basketball and baseball is probably bigger than all of them. I mean, I hear, you know, indoor track. I mean, it's just amazing what can be done if it's managed correctly. Long story short, I had a meeting in here a couple of weeks ago, I think it was actually before the last council meeting, and we had the opportunity to speak to the investors that actually donated $13,000 for a feasibility study to be done. And talked with them, we talked about financing, we talked about the town's inability to finance or bond $23 million. Matter of fact, bonding $10 million was even brought up and the hardship that it would be. So doing fundraisers and, you know, being able to see your return on investment is what individuals that may want to contribute to a facility are gonna want to see. So if I walk up to you and you are in a position to contribute funds, large amounts of funds, you're gonna, first thing you're gonna ask me is, what's it look like? Or what's my return on investment gonna be? And until we get a study done, it's hard for me to go to any funding agency or, you know, D H C D. And by the way, they have a program that actually backs the bonding of a facility like this. So not only indoor, but an outdoor facility too. So they understand what it can do for a community. They understand how it can raise a community back alive. But we need to do that feasibility study and I know I'm approaching in two minutes, so I forget. With that being said, you've got two quotes in here from Shemera. Shemera is an analysis firm. It's highly regarded, not only in Richmond, but all over Commonwealth. You pay for a product, I know I gave Miss Davis an example today when it comes to a cost. You know, you can find an individual that knows how to work on something and you might end up hiring it five times to get it done or her five times to get it done. Or you can go straight to the top and you can get the best of the best. And I believe in this situation, that this community, the town of Tazza, in Tazza County deserves to have the best of the best and the best individual involved to get that analysis done, and that is Shemera. Phase one, which would be the indoor facility, and I'm not gonna go, I know you've had an opportunity to look at this, but it'll be analyzed on six, eight and 10 courts. They will talk to coaches, they will talk to all athletic coaches, not just in Tazza County, but in a surrounding area that utilizes Liberty University. So that's how far out they'll be going in this area to look at, you know, the input from those coaches as to what this facility can do. I think I've got, how many letters, Robin? Nine, eight or nine letters from different schools that are saying, you build it, we'll come. You build it, we'll come. And they're not coming, that letter, those letters didn't come from Cherry, who might be a little biased, or from, you know, from any of the print. You know, I do have them from Graham, I've got them from Richland, I've got them from, you know, just all around. I've got eight different letters and you could probably get the other 18 if I, you know, really wanted to, that were mentioned to me via email they'll send. So phase one is indoor complex, estimated at 10 million. And that's high. Estimated 10 million. That feasibility study is $26,940. Phase two is $19,600. In order to do phase two for $19,600, you have to do phase one. So a lot of information is given in the equation. One thing I want to add to the conversation and for the record, there's been some communication as early as just a couple of hours ago with investors. And they're bringing up the idea of continuing to raise funds to, for the possibility of completing phase two. As you well know, you've got $60,000 in the new budget, the $26,940 fits. I would recommend and to cancel that you vote tonight to move on with this project. We bought that rain lot for this project. I would highly recommend that you vote tonight to approve for Shemera to do phase one at $26,940. We will continue to communicate with the investors in the community. If that feasibility study comes back, it's practical, let's do phase two. Let's bring, let's bring phase two to the picture. And let's take advantage of some of the conversations that have been brought up to the mayor of potentially raising additional funds. We will hold the $13,000 due to the conversation today, Leanne, I'm sorry. But we will hold it again, we will hold those funds and continue to draw an interest until we can work together to see what the first study will do. And I would encourage you, if the first study looks good, we may not be able to afford the first one, but let's look and see what the second one will do. Let's look and see what it'll bring to the community. Maybe, maybe that mass development of complexes will bring those larger investors like Chris Brown out of the woodwork where he'll donate the project. Anyway, with that being said, do you have any, I could go through this in depth and hit a couple of high points I know you've had a chance to look at. Do any of you have any questions about...
Are you suggesting, are you suggesting that the $13,000 raised by the community at this point will be held so they only need $6,600?
Until further negotiations take place. Ultimately, we were gonna take that $13,000 plus the three...
Or $26,900.
Yeah, plus the three we had.
To pay what we thought was gonna be.
What was $16,000 and we also had another $10,000, which is $26,000. It would've paid for at almost 100%. But due to the comments that I heard today and some of the new information and knowing that we're going into another fiscal year, I think we owe a little bit of due diligence to those investors to try to accomplish what they, what they are passionate about, which is the outdoor facility. And I think it's great. I think the outdoor facility along with baseball and outdoor soccer, it can be big, but let's... I may be able to give their money back, Chris. I may be able to get it back if this study fails. Now, there was always an opinion that it would offset the phase one study that we talked about last week. Everybody knows what we were gonna do was look at indoor complex, we call it a fund. But there are also negotiations that are taking place to that. So again, I would recommend that if we table that $13,000 for right now, doesn't mean we can't bring it back in the picture and offset the $26,000. But until those negotiations are satisfied and we use the $26,940 in the 19, 20 budget to proceed forward with phase one.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea how strategically this project is gonna impact the notion of a hotel?
Well, I can tell you this, and that's a great question. A hotel, and I said this before, is not gonna locate in a desert. All right, you've gotta have a venue. I can tell you that if this thing is managed correctly and it's operated efficiently, that it will bring people, which will demand more restaurants, other businesses will want to take advantage of it, shop and retail. Now we're growing, we're growing into a venue that will make it more attractive for hotels. The last feasibility study we did was on Main Street. And it's all about location, location, location. So that feasibility study was 51%. If you were to do a feasibility study today on a piece of property on 460, it may show 60, 65 or 70%. It's all about location. So again, we all know that we need a hotel, we all know that it's in our best interest to have one, but a hotel's not gonna come until you give them a reason. And the back of the dragon's working on that really hard. Our entrepreneurs on Main Street in the community, the rest of the whole town's working on that. But this will help maximize the ability to have a good profile.
Will this help the taxpayers in this town?
I think it'll help everybody. It'll help your businesses.
It'll lower our taxes.
It'll help reduce council's need to do due diligence and maybe raise taxes. Because it'll bring more mill taxes.
If you bring more revenue into the area, if you have this facility, they're coming, they're buying mills here, they're staying, and they're telling here.
We can afford more things like Mr. Johnson had brought up.
Yes, then you're getting more mill tax, you're getting more, what, transit tax?
I just wanna make sure it's on a tested basis.
Yeah.
I mean, we got, we got the taxes, it'll be great.
I would like to, I don't do this a whole lot, matter of fact, I can only think of a handful of times, but I'd like to... of times, but I'd like to respectfully request council to now support to proceed forward with this dream that's been on the table for everybody for two years, no need for procrastination, no need dragging it out.
I have a very good question too. Very good. Go with four, let's keep still decided.
Phase one, phase two.
Phase one.
Yeah, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All opposed.
What we got first and second?
It's already in our budget.
Yeah. We're not raising taxes.
No, no.
It's a tax discussion. Okay. In favor?
Honestly, we do. That's what all of that was that we, he talked about in the warm session, that 60,000.
All right. All opposed? All right, motion approved.
In ass. Thank you very much. I think anybody can tell you it's in the best interest of the community, I don't want anything else to do to draw people in, and to get that over there.
So I understand item D's going to be?
Yeah, I'd like to remove item D till I could have it more time to communicate with the government, but I kind of dropped the ball there, so.
Is there any other miscellaneous unfinished business? Okay, now we're going to move, just move on to new business, water and sewer true-up auditing changes?
Okay, historically, we do a water and a sewer true-up each year. The sewer true-up is done by the town of Tazle, the water true-up is obviously done by the PSA. One of the biggest variables in doing a true-up is definitely the amount of time an employee spends in that field. For example, the girls up front, that taxes, water bills, sewer bills, garbage, rentals, the list goes on. So when I build a budget, you'll notice that I usually use a 40, 30, 30 breakdown. So 40% general fund, 30 water, 30 sewer, and that's a lot of science really going into that. So Robinson Farm and Cox, our auditors, have, you know, they audit our books, and they also do the audit for the sewer true-up, have made a recommendation to both the PSA and the town of Tazle that will better fit what the industry is doing today, and that is taking the cost, which is the material cost, and the planning cost, and the operational cost, and adding straight 15% to it to cover the cost of administration. Think it's a wonderful idea. Save all kind of time, it's an equal, they're equal, we're equal, there's no worrying about, are you 30% off, are you 2% off, are you 15% off? All I need is, based on our auditor's recommendation, is council's approval to implement that into the contract with the Tazle County Board Supervisor and the PSA, and the town of Tazle contract with the sewer.
Motion, this I can approve. Can we get a motion to approve the auditor's recommended change?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries forward.
Okay, we, I received a letter June 5th, dated June 5th, from Ms. Irma Mitchell, who serves as the chair for Tazle Today. This was last week, and I've had a number of conversations with Irma via email, with Jeff, and some of the other active board members, and, you know, what I'm seeing in Tazle Today is it's just a big push to revitalize. And I've also talked to some individuals in the community, in the community that are encouraging the town to work with the new and upcoming Tazle Today. I will read this letter due time, council can take a look at it. One of, one of the things that Tazle Today has lacked in over the last, since their existence is, is actually having a quote-unquote, a manager, or a, somebody that can actually carry the ball and do what volunteers can't do because of their jobs, and because of other family matters. So it's kind of like having the local government, you know, without staff. You meet once a month, what's going on? So I know that, I know that the social media world has went by me at lightning speed. It's went by me very fast, and the times that I came up in, social media didn't exist, much less a cell phone, and I kind of skipped that generation of technology. But I can tell you that in looking at what Susan does for the town, website, Facebook, it's incredible what can be accomplished. The town of Tazle is located in a rural area, and again, we serve off of a distance of maybe 20, 20, 30, 40 miles. That's what we need in order to survive, where other areas in the Commonwealth, larger localities can literally survive off of two, three mile radius. All of their necessities and life are right there. So again, I've always said that local governments are world's worst at communicating, and as long as we believe that, we will continue to strive to better what we do. So we use Facebook, we use newspaper, we have a, we have an app on the phone, we send text messages out every time there's a water leak, and I still get phone calls, people wondering why the garbage didn't get picked up on Christmas Day. So we do everything we can to communicate, but we have so much more to offer when it comes to our ability for grants, our ability to write grants, communicating with the outside of the town of Tazle, the Tazle County, the different historical societies that are in operation, the different funding abilities the Commonwealth has to offer. And also, it's the only route that we have that'll give us the potential to get that Main Street designation, Irma, is that not correct?
There's a meeting on 20 seconds, we really need somebody to go to.
One, one thing I want to point out to council is, this is a one-time, this is a one-time contract position. It's not, you're not paying them the insurance or benefits, it's a contract position. So there'll be a board created that'll have members of the government body and also Tazle Today, and will oversee the progress and the success of this contract position. And in the future, if that, you know, if the idea, that individual is not, you know, if it does come to fruition, then you don't have to fund it again. It's no, you're not promising anybody you're going to fund it next year. It's a one-time shot to see what we can do to grow Tazle and to make it, you know, a more practical and better place to live. And, you know, I recommend to council to fund the position, and again, it's budgeted. We do have it budgeted, as I went over earlier, and I think it's important that we take advantage of social media and get somebody in there full-time that can do the job, and I know their interview process will probably start in week two, and I would encourage council to have.
That's the question that I have on that, is that the full contract for the position is 25,000, right?
That's my understanding, and is correct.
Is that right?
Well, it might not be that much. We've talked about salary, but we haven't really decided on the salary. I guess once we start interviewing other people.
So, I guess.
It won't be more, maybe, certainly.
Okay, so the full amount of the salary will be paid by the town of Tazle. So I think it's a great idea, my only insight to it is that I feel like, since the town of Tazle is putting up the salary for it, I think that they, we should have someone in the interview process. Because what the letter says from Tazle Today is that the individual will be selected by Tazle Today to fill the position, and I would like to see that be a joint venture as well by the manager or someone there, protecting the interest of the taxpayer that was spending 25,000 dollars.
I would respectfully request.
That's 25,000 dollars.
We can have a member of staff or a member of council, anybody on council, one. Anybody on council?
I just think it's due diligence.
I agree with you, I totally agree with you. I'm just, yeah, I totally, I totally agree with you. So Irma, you've heard.
I don't have a problem with that. Well, it makes sense if it's going to be governed.
The way this letter reads, the committee's joint, but the selection process is solely by the Tazle Today, so I would just like to see both of them do that.
Would you like that it be involved in the whole entire interview process, or can Tazle Today narrow it down?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay.
So one way or the other, Irma, I think what you're hearing is, is Tazle Today can narrow it down to, you know, the final three, and then, and then let me know, and I can talk to the board, and we'd like to participate in that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Remember David saying, I'm hoping, it's just a matter of, we can narrow it down, whatever you want.
Well, please, can I make a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let's move forward to some of the positions. So Todd, go give us not be done on the 319 B M L and.
Okay, for the first time, I think, in probably five or six years, the next B M L conference in Terry, I think it was one year, we went to, we were, what?
I was in Harlton.
Oh, that's right, it was in Harlton. But it's going to be in Roanoke at the, at the, yeah, Hotel Roanoke. The only problem is, they're booked. They're booked, and they, they have an overflow of hotels. So I just need a list of individuals that may want to attend that. They do have a manager's seminar, and that is very powerful, I'd encourage you.
The mayor's seminar.
Yeah, they do, fully set managers, so, but I have that. But I need, if you're interested in, interested in attending that, let me know, I know I've got one.
Which is the date?
It's October. So the Warriors Institute is Saturday, October 5th, and Sunday, the 6th, and then the B M L conference is Sunday, the 6th through Tuesday, the 8th. I would be interested.
Okay. But I'm a mayor, Terry, Emily.
Well, I have family in Roanoke, so I couldn't stay.
Oh, you didn't say that. Well, if you, we will be, since that hotel, hotel's been booked, how? Since they opened the doors up on it, it's not filmed, it's been rooming October, so it's amazing, it looked up there quickly. They do have a bunch of old loads, and we'll take care of it.
So Robin, you'll be contacting people, because I have some questions.
Yeah, and that'll be.
Okay. So will we go in here and have our town council and get the day to come back?
Yes.
So next on the agenda is this revoked new people's bank line of credit and authorization for town manager and treasurer to sign us.
Yeah. If council will recall, we have a couple of lines of credit. I noticed on one of the lines that we have, that there is an annual fee that is charged, and I requested to have that fee for that line of credit waived, and understandably, that request was denied. So we shopped around, and we found the same line of credit, and due people bank with no fees. So I would obviously encourage council to approve that line of credit, which is 350,000. By the way, we're not into even one of those lines of credit yet.
So basically, it's same amount?
Same amount.
Everything's the same except no fees?
No fees, no fees.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
You also need to do vote, and you can do this in one vote, town manager, treasurer, mayor, and vice mayor as approved signatures. I can depict it for you.
Can we get a motion to?
Is that, is that one signature, or is there two signatures?
No, like if I'm out, the mayor will come in and sign the checks, or all right, signature. So, or if the mayor's out of my mouth and the vice mayor, Lee Anne has also had approval. So it's myself, Lee Anne, the mayor, and the vice mayor.
I was just wondering if it required two signatures?
It does.
Or everything?
Everything, it's all two signatures, yes, I'm sorry.
I don't think the motion on that.
Okay.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion approved. Okay, next, approval of budget amendments. Braden?
This goes back to the donations for the feasibility study for the sports complex. At the last meeting, we did have a workshop beforehand, and this wasn't able to be in the amendments we did last time, but now we can, but we did receive that donation, and there needs to be a budget amendment of 23,000. That's the 13,000 that we got in donation, and there is another $10,000 that can be put for this also, just to show it's on the inner budget.
Give me the motion. Some move? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved. So next, Todd, go give us a recycling center discussion.
Yeah, we'll talk a little bit about the recycling center. For, for a number of administrative reasons, we have decided to try and run the recycling center unstaffed. We've got a camera up there, we've got a camera, we've got a camera on site up there, and this is an opportunity where we can probably, we can keep it open for longer hours, which I think has been a request that we've had across the board. And we will evaluate, we're going to, we're going to post the recycling center, we're clearly states under surveillance. I do not know of a substation or a recycling station, it may be out there, I'm just saying, I don't know of one that's not being, but we're going to give it a whirl. We've got a good opportunity right now to do it, so. When it comes to hours, my rescue squad is right there, the police department's 24/7, so opening and closing the gate is not an issue. We can take care of that. And mayor, I know I talked to you about this, and I didn't write it down, and I think we talked about same days, maybe?
Same days, just extended hours.
Just extended hours. So we'll open it up at the same time, but we'll close it at dusk. We'll close it at dusk, that's Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday.
Now, is this, if this works, could it be a possibility of being open additional days?
Yeah, you know, if, my biggest concern is handling, but we can actually open seven days a week. We've got a police department, a rescue squad, it's there 24/7.
So with, so we'll place the signs that's under surveillance, but we also, and Brad might be able to answer, but we need the sign saying, if you're caught on video breaking the law, throwing paint cans in there, we will find you.
Yeah, we can, we can put that language up there, too. No, that's a good idea, we'll put some language up there. There's, yeah, there's already some language up there, but because of the changes. up there, but because of the changes, um, yeah, we'll implement that, we'll implement some, some penalties, some fees, and, yeah.
My only concern is that if they'll do it back here, it can get right behind that wall there.
Yeah, I just wanna give it a whirl.
Okay.
You know, uh, the community has made a lot of comments, so the only way I can answer those comments is to take advantage of an opportunity that's opened itself up right now. Um, I had to make some changes administratively, so, uh, this is a wonderful opportunity to see if it'll work, and if it won't work.
Can we do it twenty-four seven?
Not at night.
Seven days, how would you like?
Not, not, not except.
To dusk, to dusk, uh, seven days.
Let's put all this first. Okay. Do you have the rules, do you have, do you have something with like rules, like whatever the bagged maximum is, or the, what's not allowed, or?
We, we got a whole gamut of stuff that we're talking about, number of bags, and how to pay on, and, you know, we take recycling from anybody that wants to bring it regardless of where it's been, um, but when it comes to the receptibles there, it's only for citizens of the town of Tazle. Obviously, that's gonna get abused to some degree, um.
It will.
And it absolutely will, I know it will, but.
It's not like you're gonna be driving forty miles away to bring your trash. I mean, if they live right outside the town, that's what we'll have to deal with, but I mean, I think the basic thing we have to do is the message when we go there, because it's.
Well, and if we have it, if we try it out for these three days, for the extended times, and we find that we need to be emptying the recycling containers more frequently, that also, you can base what you would need up if you open up more.
We, we will, and, you know, the recycling, the emptying, emptying those is a task that that we have to, historically, we never had to do, so we do have to pull off and maintain it. All of that to take into consideration, and, you know, the biggest thing we wanna try to do, serve the citizens of town of Tazle to the best of our ability, um, and do it, you know, with a, with a financial understanding, you know, we're doing what we can. It depends, if it's a holiday, um, the dumpster could be emptied twice a day. Um, recycling bins are kinda steady, um, but it just depends on the day and the week, and.
I think we did the basic steps, we tried with the three days that it's originally open. Let's see what happens, and.
Yeah, but we'll advertise it on, on Facebook and all those other social things, and create some wording, and some posters out there, and.
I've had, I've had people say that they haven't used the recycling center because they can't get there at the time, so, 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 you know, what you do. Yeah.
Yeah, well, good. We hope it does. I think it will, too, but just hope it's not viewed.
Okay. All on that, uh, next, uh, Todd has an aqua park discussion.
Um, we spoke briefly during, during the work session about the aqua park, and, you know, we can get into the social economic, um, social status that we, we live in here, and we can often speculate as to why, why the aqua park is, or why it's not. Um, I still think that the aqua park is very young, I think it's a very young idea, and, you know, accepting change, regardless if it's good or bad, accepting change, and that change is literally, if we have an aqua park, sometimes it takes time to say again. So, you know, uh, I think we need to continue to, to maximize the, again, social media, how many times have I said social media, like, but, you know, maximize the tools that we've got to get it out there. Um, you know, I talked to Ben today, and, you know, he's really hitting a home run on parties, and, you know, different events out there, so, you know, we'll continue to do that. Um, I think the cost, um, for anything, knowing, knowing the percentage of our population in our schools that are on some, some type of financial subsid, subsidization, um, is having, is having a tremendous impact. You know, it's expensive for a family with two children to, for, you know, cost them thirty bucks to go out there to the aqua park. So what I'd like to do.
I think with.
Before the weapons kill is issue, yeah. Yeah, there's no question about it. Last, Sunday, two weeks ago, the aqua park, I mean, the pool was packed, and the aqua park had five or six or ten people there. I think the first day, we had, what, being sixty-something people there, and fifty of those tickets were free. Um, so, I mean, we're gonna keep analyzing, we're gonna keep working on it, we're gonna keep pushing it, but what I'd like to do is, is recommend to Cancel to have a, a Friday a couple of weeks from now, like a five-dollar Friday. And what that five dollars will do is the pool right now is X, but this will get you the pool and the aqua park for five bucks. Just do it, we'll advertise it for one day, a couple of weeks from now, and, you know, if, if the kids come out, or if the adults come out that day, it kinda answers a little bit of a question for me when it comes to cost. Um, and it'll help me and staff better analyze what our next move is to make that, you know, the big, regardless of the price, I just wanna see it used, and I know Cancel does, too. There's nothing in local government that we do that makes money. I can show you the public works does not make a dime. The police department, unfortunately, does not make a dime. Recreation, the public works, nothing we do in local government makes money, that's not what we're here for. Um, and, uh, you know, you can, you can go out to the Lincolnshire Pool at the concession stand and get a pretty decent meal at a really attractive cost, and we do that, we do that so that the parents will feel comfortable, and, you know, financially, it's not a burden. Um, so again, I'll send it out via email, I'll let you know what staff selects, is that Friday? Um, I'll keep you updated, I'll keep you updated on that, so. Five-dollar Friday.
Okay.
Five-dollar Friday, whole park.
Hey, Todd?
Yes, sir.
Bring this up. What about the, uh, safety sample checks on the water? Is that every day sample?
No, we don't, we don't do them every day, we do them about once a week. It's never even been closed. Never even been closed. Um, never. I can't even remember what the park was really in, never had a lifeguard.
That's, that's.
Had too many of them, I'm trying to cut back there, but I know where you're going. We've had too many. I did too many. Oh, there was three of them on the kayak out there the other day going in and out the aqua park. They looked good and everything, but they made the four people on the aqua park, so, yeah, we got too many.
You guys must like this.
They are just.
Yeah, they, they were, there was three, four lifeguards out there that day, they're all over the place. Yeah, it comes at a cost, I mean, it pays nuts, uh, plus we're shut, plus we're, you know, we're running them back and forth, and, yeah, I mean.
I just want to be safe for the kids, that's all.
I'm sorry?
I just want to be safe.
Oh, yeah, we, we were very, we had, the lifeguards, yeah, we were in shape, of course.
Yeah, it does. That's all, yeah, thank you. So now, did anyone sign in? Someone signed in on the list? Is there any, uh, public comment that didn't, didn't sign in on the list?
Uh, you're talking about the aqua park, you're a hundred miles far, look at the money it makes every day, you're in the sun, it's good money. Why can't you push the, the floats and all this stuff on the upper end of the lake? Awesome saying, make a four-man beach, that's what Humble Mo's Park is, and it makes fortune. Have a restaurant, you get Matt down there, you get Mercer down, you get all kinds of people, still going across the mountain, Humble Mo's Park, down the lake, you check. Still have your floats, the aqua park there, have a beach. It's a money-making fact.
Understood, yeah, and, uh, that's actually on the list of things that we're looking at for the revenue, the whole, the re, rematch of the lakes.
Do we get shield to play in there? Do we get whole gamut of stuff? We just think after.
I have to see where it gets in the real, yeah, passage, and logging down the county path.
All right, ladies, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna break for executive session. Any other questions?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? All right.